The June 2nd, 2025 work session of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners will come to order. Wow, I can't believe that it's June already. Roll call, clerk, could you please engage us in a roll call, please, for the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner District 1, Henry Mitchell.
Present.
Commissioner District 2, Whitney Kenner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner District 3, Martin Raxton.
Present.
Commissioner District 4, Vice Chair Mark Alcaraz.
Present.
Chairman Dr. Ramona Jackson Jones.
Present. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, did we have anyone sign up for public comment today?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we have no one signed up. For the Commissioners, certainly before I engage you into the agenda adoption, Commissioners, we have a couple of changes for the agenda. Adding items to request authorization for the chairman to sign a certification of consistency form for the Douglas County Community Service Board to submit a housing grant application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is HUD. And explain why this is being added. Certainly, I'll have Pat, Henry is here when we get to that point, explain why it's being added because the initial application that you all approved me to sign off for, I believe it was around November, December, the HUD had sent some additional information back and said they needed some changes, like some slight changes made and needed my, a new signature, but we didn't want to move forward without you, you all being notified of this request. And also requesting to add the appointment of Fay Marie Landis to the Animal Control Advisory Board to represent the chairman's appointment. You know, I had one vacancy open that was, that will represent me and this person's name is Fay Marie Landis would be bringing this person before y'all and be added to the agenda. So with that being said, Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda with these two additional items that I just spoke out?
Madam Chair, I also had another agenda item if we're looking at the agenda. To remove and table item number 19 to the 61625 working session. And with that, a motion to approve the agenda as modified and presented by Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Board, we have a motion and a second. End of discussion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand to agree to these, okay? We have a five or unanimous vote and the motion carries. All right, with that being said, Board of Commissioners, let's just keep in mind that we do have three minutes to make remarks and two minutes for our rebuttal this morning. That's regarding our time limits. And clerk, I ask if you could please keep us on track with our time, okay? We have a couple of presentations this morning and we will not, clerk, these presentations are they for tomorrow or today?
Yes, ma'am, they're for tomorrow.
These presentations, we have a few presentations tomorrow. Board of Commissioners, recognition of employees UA Brand, Chief Allen, recognition of Douglas County resident, Chief Allen, and also recognition of the Douglas County employees, our Chief of Staff, which is Tiffany Stuart Stanley. And when I said Chief Allen, fire Chief Allen, okay?
Chairman, can I just mention the one for UA Brands will be moved to the second meeting in June.
Okay, it will be removed. Board of Commissioners, please make a note of that. And if you could just make sure he specified UA, you know, I don't really like acronyms and I know the citizens would love to know what UA means as well.
Yes, ma'am, I'll get with the chief.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that being said, Board of Commissioners, that's, clerk, I yield the floor to you. One, just one minute, clerk. Board, be mindful tomorrow, we do have the approval of our minutes, which will be the commission meeting minutes and also the work session minutes and the executive session from May 20th and May 19th, 2025. So just wanted you to be mindful of that. Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Thank you. We will have a public hearing tomorrow, which is number four, public hearing to initiate consideration of a development impact fee ordinance, including the purpose and process for developing a capital improvements element, the steps to be followed in preparation of the CIE, and to elicit community input on needs and goals. And Allison Duncan is here to answer any questions regarding that.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners.
Good morning.
As Clerk Watson said, we will have our kickoff public hearing for our impact fee ordinance. This is required under state law, so that very lengthy description on your agenda is the exact language that we received from the consultants to make sure that we are complying with the minimum requirements of the state. I will also have a brief presentation that I can share with you tomorrow to get this kicked off, and I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have. It will be a public hearing, so as always, we encourage people to come out and give us their feedback, but I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have today.
Any questions, Board, or our manager of planning?
No questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Okay, we will start with our grants. Number five, approval of the aging subcontract agreement from the Atlanta Regional Commission for the period of October 1, 2024, to September 30th, 2025, for $521,732.99 with a reimbursable amount of $417,386.39 from the Atlanta Regional Commission previously covered in Connect Douglas's existing budget, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Ron Roberts.
Thank you, thank you Commissioners, Administration. This is a sub-grant agreement that we do with the Agency on Aging at the Atlanta Regional Commission for our voucher program in the pack, and I sent last year's sub-grant agreement along with the one to be signed for this year so that we can get the reimbursement. It is an 80/20 match, and it has been cleared by legal, and Dominic and I have had a conversation about it as well. Just helps keep the voucher program going and does serve a lot of good people in the community. I'm here for any questions you have.
Okay, thank you so much, Director Roberts. Board of Commissioners, any questions? Okay, Commissioner Raxton, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
So just curious, I know you said that you mentioned or you had the conversation with the CFO, and just curious, the match, the 104,000, is that already in the budget for this year?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and then last question, and then just in regards to metrics, do we have an idea of how many 65 and older or those with disabilities will be served?
Yes, currently, Commissioner, there's 260, 260, 265 people enrolled in the voucher program, and we have 13 private providers that, that we work with for those services. And as, as you already know, they, they can buy $100 worth of vouchers for 10 bucks and use them with those private providers. I know staff is setting up a meeting with the private providers this week, this check-in meeting. And then also, the Agency on Aging hosted all of the recipients last week, and so I had a couple of staff that I sent to that as well to, to participate. One thing I, when I add is that this, you know, we've done a really good job with, with what we've been able to do with these funding, and it's, and it's noticed at the Atlanta Regional Commission. I mean, we're, with a couple of years, well, actually, beginning of last year, we had that, they had some ARPA funds that needed to expand quickly, and we were able to put the program together and put it on the street. And although it, it ran out after a certain time, we were able to get in there and utilize it for mostly District 4 time, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Madam Chair, I yield the floor back to you.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Raxton. Any other question, Board?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Vice Chair.
I was just curious, where do we stand in regards to the status of like our bus shelters?
Oh, so I have a presentation to City Council on June 16th. Got the hard drive in my pockets, on my keychain, as a matter of fact, so I'm already, we were able to get on there. I'll have the engineers that did the design, and we'll go and, and meet with them. I had the opportunity to taste of Douglasville, we manned the booth, so I did get a chance to run into a couple of councilwomen, men for the city, so I kind of laid the groundwork for that as well.
That's all, Madam Chair, I yield back.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mitchell, I believe I saw your hand.
Yes, yes, Madam Chair, so just, just, so how, I know, I mean, okay, first of all, the 104, that $104,000, you said that's in your budget though, so we're, we're covered on that end. How are we actually doing, because I know there was a one time with the seniors in the, with these vouchers, that we were kind of sort of behind because there was a waiting list on, on those vouchers. How are we, how are we doing now?
It is unfortunate. We do have a little bit of a waiting list. I don't know right now how many people are on the waiting list. I only remembered how many people are actually in the program.
Got it.
But we do try to, we do update those regularly. Staff does, does a good job of going through and making sure that people aren't, you know, sitting on the vouchers, that they're actually participating in the program. If they're not, then, you know, we, we do try to help, you know, move those to other recipients.
But I guess my question though is, for those that was tried, that was on the waiting list, have that list kind of diminished to a degree, or how are we doing with that list, or that waiting list, to even try to get on the list? Because at the one time, we had a huge waiting list and was hoping that there were some ARPA funds and other funds that would come down from the state, whomever else, to kind of help out, to improve on cutting that list and getting that list down to zero.
Yeah, I don't, like I said, I, I would, I'd have to email you back this afternoon. I can find out as soon as I get back to the office exactly how many people are on the waiting list currently. I, I don't know it off the top of my head right now.
Right, right. And it's not, I was just curious to know kind of where we are. Are we getting better? Are we doing better? Are we?
I think so. I think the, we were able to migrate individuals into, especially with the new routes that we started last May. The service area is, is for the ADA pair of transit is quite robust.
Right.
So there's a lot of needs that are met through that. The voucher program really is for individuals that, you know, are outside of that ADA service area.
Right.
We try to, you know, manage that as best we can.
Got it, okay, okay, all right, good. Like I said, I was just curious, you know, I mean, you don't have to get those numbers for me, I just, I was just kind of wanting to know, are we improving on that area, or are we still looking for more of that waiting list because we got an aging population that's, you know, ever-growing, forever-growing?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's, it's definitely happening, Commissioner Mitchell.
Right, and I just want to kind of make sure that we're keeping up with it though. That's all. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I yield back.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. All right, if there are no other questions, I believe we're okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Thank you. Number six, approval to submit a supplemental funding application to the Georgia Department of Transportation in connection with fiscal year 2025 LMIG/LRA grant program in the amount of $1,847,453.22 with no local match, amend the budget, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Sol Monrana.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, and County Administration. Before you is a supplemental grant application to a state's maintenance program called LMIG. LMIG stands for Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant. This is an annual grant that facilitates our resurfacing efforts typically. This year, we have identified some supplemental funding in this program that facilitates some of our ongoing maintenance initiatives, from resurfacing to signage maintenance, et cetera. The first application before you in this agenda item requests funding for supplemental resurfacing of approximately 6.27 miles of roadway. One point I'd like to note here is that this is additional resurfacing on top of what we have already secured and currently advertising, which is approximately seven miles of resurfacing. This grant comes to us without a local match, but depending on the bid results, if there's any adjustments needed to facilitate or encumber the contract costs, SPOS funds may be used to bridge that gap. With that, we're recommending this for your approval. The four roads that are on the list are mostly arterials and collector roads. The list was attached to your agenda packet. Four roads are North County Line Road for District 1, Anoaki Road for District 2, Central Church Road for District 3, and Liberty Road for District 4. With that, I would yield for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Managing Director, Rana. Any questions?
Just a comment.
Okay. Commissioner Raxton, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. Good morning. So I am definitely hopeful that we can get this grant approved because we definitely need these roads resurfaced. So we're definitely very excited that this opportunity is available, and we look forward to hopefully, if we move forward in submitting this application, of getting a pretty quick response from the state, hopefully on the approval. So with that, thank you for the diligence of the team there. And Madam Chair, I yield the floor back to you.
All right, thank you so much. Any other comments? Okay, Vice Chair, Alcaraz, you have the floor.
What, what portion of Liberty Road are you speaking of?
The limits on Liberty Road would be from F S Church to North Hilton.
Okay, all right, I yield back, Madam Chair.
Any other questions, Board? All right, with that being said, Madam Clerk, we have the next item.
Number seven, approval to submit LMIG Safety Action Plan, which is Phase 1, grant application to Georgia Department of Transportation for replacement of signing and marking on various county roads in the amount of $520,000 with a 30% match to be funded through SPOS 2022 funds, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Sol Monrana.
Under the same funding program referred to as LMIG, we have identified an additional program referred to as SAP, Safety Action Plan, that facilitates maintenance needs on safety-sensitive roadways. Using this funding opportunity, we're requesting the state to award funds to replace and refresh signage along various roadways of our county. In Phase 1 of this application, we're requesting approximately half a million dollars with about 30% match that will refresh signage on over 69 roads that covers approximately 50 mile, 51 miles of roadway in Douglas County. With that, we're recommending your approval on this application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Managing Director. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Okay. Number eight, approval to submit an LMIG Safety Action Plan, Phase 2, grant application to Georgia Department of Transportation for replacing of signing and marking on various county roads in the amount of $910,000 with a 30% match to be funded by SPOS 2022 funds, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Solman.
Under the same program, Phase 2 of this grant application requests funding in the amount of $910,000 with a 30% match that will facilitate improvement of signage along 119 miles of county roadway. This investment represents one of the largest investments in our signage management program that initiated a few years ago. With 23 program already completed, our internal efforts ongoing, and these two programs combined, we're looking at approximately revitalizing 50% of the signs across the entire county. And considering the first agenda item and the entire LMIG program, these four applications combined represent the largest funding under LMIG for Douglas County. With that, we're recommending your approval on this application. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Managing Director. Any questions for?
Yeah, just a quick.
All right, Commissioner Raxton, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. So I know in the first packet, we saw for item number seven, there was a list of signage for 525K, and the second one looks like that same list, and I was just curious, is there a different list of sinages? Just so I'm clear.
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to recheck that and give you the new list if that's not already there, but it is a separate list. The first list covers 51 miles, the second list covers 119 miles.
Okay, that'd be great. All right, thank you. All right, Madam Chair, I yield the floor back to you.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Raxton. Any other questions? All right.
Okay. We will move to our business items. Number nine, approval of a resolution to acquire 0.60 acres of parcel ID 00530150030, and acquire FTA's ownership of the parcel for an amount not to exceed $146,400 to be funded through SPOS 2022 fund in connection with the DOT administration building project, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Sol Monrana.
Thank you. Madam Chair, DOT administration building is a SPOS 2022 project that proposes approximately 5,600 square feet of administrative building located at the lower parking lot of the Connect Douglas lot where the MMTC exists today. This lot was purchased in 1990s using FTA funds. The entire 12 acres was purchased with 80% funding from FTA with the goal of utilizing this lot for transit purposes. Over time, this lot is currently not needed for any additional transit purposes, and we're recommending repurposing this lot into an administrative function by proposing the administrative, DOT administrative building construction on that lot. Out of the 12 acres, we're proposing impacts on about .6 acres of the lower parking lot that remains unutilized. In order to do so, we must purchase the FTA's financial interest, given that they are 80% owners of that lot. We went through an appraisal service, and 80% of the appraised value comes out to approximately In working with FTA counterparts, we have established an approach where this amount will be reallocated from SPOS to our Connect Douglas Department for a future FTA reimbursement. Therefore, no payment would go back to FTA but remain within the county for transit use. With that, we're recommending your approval of this disposition of the lot through FTA. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, Board? Okay.
Okay. Number 10, approval to execute a maintenance and no-in contract with GDOT in connection with the Highway 5 at Banks Mill Road Roundabout Project at No Cost, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Solman.
This roundabout is a GDOT project that aims to improve the intersection of Highway 5 at Banks Mill, Pool Road, and Dorset Choles. This roundabout is proposing landscaping in the median of the roundabout, even though this is state route, the project is state-delivered project. The district office is requesting the county to take up ownership of the maintenance of just the inscribed circle of the roundabout. In the interest of moving this project forward, we're willing to facilitate that effort, and as needed, this will be done through our internal resources, our DOT maintenance department. Therefore, we're recommending your approval of this maintenance contract. Thank you.
Okay, any questions, Board?
Number 11, approval to renew an on-demand pavement marking contract with Tidwell Traffic Solutions pursuant to RFP 23-006 with no impact to the budget, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Solman.
In 2023, we solicited an on-demand contract to assist with our yearly road striping needs. Every year, traffic operation utilizes a departmental budget to perform any maintenance needed across the striping in Douglas County. As a result of that bid, we, we went under contract with Tidwell Traffic Solutions as our on-demand contractor. So far, we've been satisfied with the service and the unit prices provided by this vendor. The original bid allowed for two extensions of the contract. This will be our second extension if approved by the board, and then eventually it would go out for bid again next year. We're recommending your approval on this extension. Thank you.
Any questions, Board?
Number 12, approval to accept a supplemental agreement with Michael Baker International with connection, in connection with the Highway 5 at Mason Creek Intersection Improvement Project in the amount of $29,868 and to be funded by the 2016 SPOS funds, amend the budget, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Solman.
Highway 5 at Mason Creek is a SPOS 2016 intersection improvement project. This went under design towards end of last year. During our initial data analysis and design stages, in coordination with our state partners, we've identified that, that a roundabout is the optimal improvement for this intersection. This will also complement the previously discussed proposed roundabout by GDOT at Highway 5 at Pool, Pool Road, which would eventually be redirecting Dorset Choles traffic towards this intersection. In order to do so, there was additional survey needed because, because of the roundabout, the project limits expanded by approximately 4.8 acres. To cover that additional survey cost, this supplemental agreement is needed. Therefore, we're recommending your approval on this change order. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Board?
Number 13, approval to award a construction contract to Albion?
Albion.
Albion, in the amount of $3,288,591 pursuant to ITV 25-010 in connection with the DOT administration building project to be funded by SPOS 2022 funds, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Solman.
Lastly, DOT administration, again, is a SPOS 2022 building project. Upon a successful procurement process under the direction of Director Joyce, we received four responses. Albion was deemed as the lowest yet, yet most responsive bidder. Therefore, we're recommending your approval on this contract. Thank you.
Any questions, Board? Okay? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Managing Directors, Rana.
Okay, we'll move to number 14, preliminary plat approval for Hampton Mill, Unit 2, Phase 2, for a 41-unit, single-family detached development. This was This was deferred from our May 5, 2025 work session. Now, we don't have Allison here, we have Austin. Austin, Austin Cronin, sorry.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners and County Administration.
Good morning.
So I have a presentation for you. Let me get it on the screen. All right, so we've made a brief staff report for this proposal. It's preliminary plat proposal. In the residential low-density zoning, about 30 acres total, 49 lots proposed. Access would be from South Shelby Road to the north and the existing Town Manor Drive to the east. Proposed to be served by sewer, and they meet their density threshold. The Hampton Mill Neighborhood, Unit 1, Phases 1 through 3, is made up of 146 developed homes. The Hampton Mill Neighborhood has developed approximately, has about six to eight different floor plans available. The average heated square footage of the homes within the Hampton Mill Neighborhood is 3,162 square feet. About 16% are between 2,600 and 2,700, 8% between 2,700 and 2,800, and 66% between, or over 2,900 square feet. All major subdivisions are required to submit an architectural pattern book with their final plat for final review and approval. So, staff is recommending a set of conditions for Unit 2, Phase 1B, and Phase 2. The same conditions for both. All homes shall be a minimum of 2,500 square feet of heated floor area. In Phase 1B, a minimum of 40, or sorry, 70% of the homes must be a minimum of 2,900 square feet. In Phase 2, a minimum of 70% of the homes must be 2,900 square feet. Phases 1B and Phase 2 shall have a minimum of three distinct floor plans per each phase. The architectural pattern book submitted with the application for final plat shall demonstrate compliance with the current residential design standards found in Appendix A of the Unified Development Code, as well as compatibility with the existing architectural design of Hampton Mill, Unit 1, Phases 1, 2, and 3. And determinations of compliance and compatibility shall be made by the Director of Development Services in the event of a disagreement. The Director shall require the project to be submitted to the Board of Commissioners for special use permit approval in accordance with applicable codes and regulations. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions on Phase 1B?
Thank you so much, Austin.
Yes, and the applicant and development team is here for discussion if you have any questions for them as well.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Board of Commissioners, do you have any questions? Or do you need the applicant team here for discussion matters?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Raxton, certainly you can call the discussion team up. You can do that.
Okay, great. So, Austin, thank you. And I know that we had talked about it. I think, I just want to clarify that currently, the average home in the Hampton Mill subdivision that you indicate is currently 3,162 square feet?
Yes, sir, 3,152.
Okay, that's the average, the average size of 146 dwellings, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. All right, and then also, would this subdivision, or what's being proposed for both Phase 2 and Phase 1B, be considered as a separate Hampton Mill subdivision or as part of the current Hampton Mill subdivision?
It would be considered a continuation of the Hampton Mill subdivision. They've titled it as a continuation as well. So staff's treating it as a continuation.
Okay, so it was continuation. Okay, great. All right, Madam Chair, I would like to hear from the applicant, if that's okay?
Okay, that's fine. Attorney Fowler.
Thank you.
Morning, everyone. Joe Fowler, Post Office Box 49. Happy June the 2nd. It's already here, approaching summer. I represent Gerald Van Zant. Initially, he did the Hampton Mill subdivision decades ago. The original approval contemplated something entirely different from this. And what you have before you, 1B, that is Unit 1B and Unit 2, essentially the same total of 90 lots. The county minimum, as you know, is 1,800 square feet. What he proposes is 2,500 square feet for all of those 90 homes. 2,500 happens to be what the HOA requirement, what the covenant requirements are in Hampton Mill, and that's what they're requesting. The price of a 2,500 square foot home at this point is roughly $200 a square foot. So you're looking somewhere for these new homes that would be built somewhere between $450,000 to $500,000. We believe that's a good market, and it will not be inconsistent with the type and quality of the homes that were built in the initial phases. One more thing I'd like to talk about. Everything else that's mentioned there, Conditions 2, 3, and 4 are perfectly fine. It's just the square footage of the homes that he's requesting. We fix it at 2,500, both for this, Unit 1B and Unit 2. But we would ask you to please consider a Condition Number 5, and it deals with the DOT. As you may know, Central Church Road travels essentially east and west. And under the DOT requirements, the developer will have to add in a new, rather long deceleration lane, which essentially makes Central Church Road three lanes toward the entrance to this new development. And they also have to add in a left-turn lane as you go westbound. All of that is fine, that is routine, it's required to be done. But there is a requirement that was suggested by the DOT that would require the developer to create a new right-turn lane out of the subdivision. It's along what's called Shelby Lane. And there is no right-of-way within Shelby Lane for us to do that. We might be able to acquire the right-of-way, but we don't have the power of eminent domain. So what we would ask you to do is, for Condition Number 5, to remove the requirement that was required by the DOT staff, that there be a right-turn lane. And Madam Chair, I see you turning to look at the screen. There is no Condition 5. What we're looking for is relief from the staff requirement, not the westbound or eastbound requirements. We all understand that. But it is the requirement that would mandate a right-turn lane in somebody else's front yard. And we don't have the ability to require, to acquire that property. I will note that that right-turn lane is not required by a traffic study that was performed. If you look at it later, it's on page 24. The traffic study looked at what is warranted and what is not warranted. And that which was warranted would be what I've described on Central Church Road, but not on Shelby Lane. And furthermore, it doesn't appear to be required by the UDC. So, thank you for hearing me. I know it's a bit unusual. It used to be so routine to have these plats approved. But now, with conditions being added, we thought it important to mention these two things to you. Thank you very much for your attention. I'll not respond to the next one, but the same thing applies with respect to Exhibit 2. Thank you, Mr. President.
Before you leave, Attorney Fowler. Board of Commissioners, do you have any questions for Attorney Fowler?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Vice Chair, Aquiles, you have the floor.
Sorry, I'm just a little confused about this because building subdivisions, I've never known any that I've ever done that requires a percentage to be of different sizes. What was the, what was the original requirement in regards to that subdivision minimum requirement?
2,500 square feet.
That was the original, from what's already currently built?
Yep, they built larger than the 2,500 required by the covenants. Some, as you've just heard, 2,900 square feet to even larger. But if you build a 3,000-square-foot house now, it's going to be $600,000 minimum.
Easily. So, but going back to that, or Allison, maybe you can answer, just since you woke up, is to, while we are changing or giving a certain percentage in there when the minimum requirement is 2,500, and they're agreeing to build 2,500? I'm just kind of confused on that.
Those covenants may or may not actually apply, given the duration of those. We've had discussions with staff about the county minimum versus 2,500, and what the staff has recommended is what you see before you.
Okay. You got some, you want to add, Allison, please?
Sure thing. One quick correction. The actual plat approval specified that one-story houses are required to be a minimum of 1,800 square feet, and two-story houses are required to be a minimum of 2,500 square feet. So I would say probably prior to the housing recession in 2008, these conditions were quite common. Could show you a handful of subdivisions. To be perfectly transparent, staff does not love the conditions where you have to monitor different percentages. But what we think is unique about this project is that the Phase 1 of Hampton Mill that was built kind of prior to and right on top of the housing recession does have about 70% of its homes are above 2,900 square feet right now. Austin did a breakdown of all the percentages. And as you know, we'd be more than happy to give you increment by increment percentage of the breakdown. But we do feel that because this is being treated as a continuation, right? The developer titled this Hampton Mill Phases 2 and things like that, that it is appropriate to recognize that some time has elapsed. But for all intents and purposes, these next phases are going to be identical to what came in. So we want to make sure that we're working with the HOA and the community to address their concerns in that regard. We have had other neighborhoods who, again, started to develop prior to the crash, had to take a little bit of a pause as the economy sorted itself out. And then, as people have come in and bought new lots or bought additional phases, they have substantially not been compatible with what was down there originally. St. Andrews is an example that I would share. Bear Creek Estates is another example. So that's what we're trying to manage in this one, is to recognize the time that has elapsed and be fair to both the developer, the homeowners association, and the folks in the community who are seeing this as a continuation of that initial phase. Does that help kind of frame the context around this a little bit?
Yes, but am I wrong in what I thought I heard is, regardless was, is a single-level or, you know, two-story house or three, he's agreed to any of those being 2,500 square feet?
That is correct. The developer has agreed to anything being 2,500 square feet in the subdivision. The request that we've had from the HOA is to have something that's a little bit higher. And so based on our analysis of what's on the ground today, it shows that about 67% are above 2,900 square feet. So I think the concern is for uniformity, right? In that cookie-cutter approach, that everything would come in and be identical. We put some conditions in that will control the architecture and the floor plan. And as you've heard, the developers are amenable to that, which is great. We bring forward the condition about the actual percentage, just in recognition of feedback we've gotten from the HOA to try to preserve something that they think will be in the best interest of extending the community. Obviously, the decision is up to the Board of Commissioners as to how you choose to move forward with this. Condition Number 5 that Joe had proposed, I would defer to Suleman Rana if he wants to speak specifically to a DOT condition. That wasn't anything that we had discussed previously about providing a waiver other than to say that we do not think that a condition is an appropriate way to seek a waiver for a UDC requirement. It would be more appropriate to go through the variance process.
Okay, all right. I yield back.
Anything else?
Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chair. Commissioner Raxton?
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Allison. Certainly, just looking at the numbers there, and again, as you indicated, 67% currently are over 2,900 square feet. That's in the subdivision right now. And again, this is a continuation. So from a math standpoint, I'm looking at, if we could look at even at 30% of the homes are at least 2,500 square feet, and 70% is 2,900 square feet, that gets us to 100%. And with that being said, again, maintaining the integrity of the current development and what the community has requested to maintain that. So we're not getting into a cookie-cutter track development subdivision that's extension of what's currently there.
Correct. I mean, that's the reason why we kind of started with the square footage and discussing with the HOA. We think that you're probably going to want something more than square footage as a control to make sure that there's compatibility. We do think that the architectural amendments that we did to the Unified Development Code get us a fair amount of the way there. But we certainly want to reflect the desire of the HOA to have a community that looks substantially like what was started back in 2007, 2008.
Yep, absolutely. And again, continuing with the property value and the value of the community itself. And to me, that is paramount. And that's something that we heard loud and clear, not only for the HOA, but the other sub, surrounding subdevelopments and divisions in that community as well.
Sure thing, yes. We know that there have been meetings between the development team and the HOA. And so our understanding is that what we have come out with is something that we hope is amenable to everyone. We certainly recognize that the HOA would like to see a little bit more specificity in the square footage. We certainly recognize that the development team would like to see a little bit less specificity. So what we tried to propose was a compromise based on, you know, kind of meeting in the middle between both what parties would like. Not going to say that we got there successfully because you can see there's a little bit of concern about that. But as always, we'll follow the direction of the board in terms of how you'd like to move forward with it.
All right, thank you. And absolutely, Attorney Fowler, just like to commend you as well as the builder for meeting with the community, taking input from the residents, which I think is paramount in something as vast as this. So I just want to recognize you and the team for doing that, and thank you.
Well, and thank you for being a part of that. One more quick note. Hampton Mill Phase 1 exits out on Dorset Shoals Road. This new extension, of course, will be exclusively on to Central Church Road. We don't know the degree to which the people leaving the first phase will change from Dorset Shoals Road to Central Church Road. But what they will do is they will pass by, if they decide now to go to Central Church Road, they'll pass by maybe three or four or five houses in this new development. So just in terms of the uniformity of Phase 1 that's got houses at 3,000 square feet or more, that's not going to be an issue where they'll be passing by what appears to be a decline in value of the homes. If they do decide to go north out to Central Church Road, they may see three, four, or five of these houses that are only worth $500,000, for example. And then one final point about the added lane coming out of, onto Central Church Road on Shelby. We don't see that as a UDC requirement, but I'll speak with Suleman now before it comes up tomorrow morning. Thank you for hearing me. I know that's a little bit unusual on these applications for plan approval.
Thank you so much. Madam Chair, I yield the floor back to you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yeah, I just have one, though, Joe. So, well, maybe, it may be Allison. So how does the HOA part of this works with the Phase 2 and 1 and 2B or whatever that is?
Austin may be better able to handle this question, but my understanding is that they are going to be separate HOAs? Do you want to speak to that?
Oh, separate HOAs? Got it.
Yes, sir. From our talks with the HOA and with Mr. Vincent and the other developer, it was indicated that a separate HOA is possible.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so, but the conversations were had with the current HOA in trying to meet somewhere in the middle with what we're trying to do now, though, correct?
Yes, sir.
Got it, got it. Okay, I was just wondering how was that going to work with them just all of a sudden coming? Now, is there, and this may be Joe, I don't know. Is there a common area that's going to come in Phase 2? It's just going to be, okay. Joe's nodding like, no, there isn't. So these are just basically 90 lots, from my understanding?
Yes, sir. Well, they would still have to meet with the Unified Development Code requires. So an active play area will be required.
Say it again, I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry. The Unified Development Code would require the active play area, and that's indicated. It's a little hard to see, but above the mail kiosk in the middle of the screen there on Phase 1B. And then Phase 2 also has a little active play area as well to meet Unified Development Code requirements.
Got it, got it. So, so there will be some common area, I guess?
Yes, sir.
What I was alluding to, though. And let me let Joe, because Joe, he's chopping at the bit.
I just understood your question. There are the statutory requirements, that is, under the UDC for common area. I thought you were saying common area with Phase 1. It would be unique to these two phases, 1B and 2.
Got it, got it. So there is? Okay, okay, got it. And that's what I was looking for, you know, and truly get the true purpose of the HOA, you know, that will be for these two phases. Got it. Okay. And Joe, once again, though, can you, or either of you guys, this right-turn phase, I mean, Condition Number 5, which is not there, but can you go into that once more so I can make sure? Yeah, because I know you can't. It's kind of tough for you guys to be responsible for trying to take private property to make that, you know, happen. for trying to take private property to make that, you know, happen, but what are we doing here? And that may be a question for you, Joe, and then I'll pass it along to staff.
Shelby Lane is narrow.
Mm-hmm.
Two lanes to get out to Central Church Road. If we have to add a lane?
Right.
There's no right-of-way for us to do that.
Right.
And the person who is there may say, I'm not selling you anything, or I'll sell it to you, but it's a million dollars.
Right.
We don't have the right to condemn. We don't see that in the UDC, but I probably need to take that up with Suliman, and as I said, we'll report back on that.
Right. And I think Suliman is going to come up here and somewhat address that. Because I guess I'm just trying to put on the table all the potential surprises, so we won't end up getting there only to find like, oh, now it's a must, or you've got to do what that may be required of the applicant.
Yes, greetings, Commissioner. So it is atypical to require a turn lane for the subdivision access road. In this case, this would be the northbound right turn on Shelby. But per UDC, the Director of Transportation or the DOT can require offsites or additional improvements that are explicitly mentioned on UDC. So, for example, the left turn he mentioned, the right turn on the main line on Central Church, those are explicitly mentioned and required per UDC. But the reason behind us requiring a right turn for Shelby is because this future expansion of Unit Two, Unit Three, the growth that's coming to this subdivision over the years, after quite a few years, this will add to the congestion as this road is used to access Central Church. This turn lane would possibly require additional right-of-way, and they don't have the power to condemn. But in those cases, that's when they provide documentation of a fair attempt, trying to do an improvement, but had an obstacle like right-of-way acquisition. But to date, I haven't seen that. This has been a requirement for quite some time, but, you know, it wasn't brought up that it would be impossible. It is a minor arterial central church, and coming into Shelby, I do believe that there's generous right-of-way, even the corner lot, while initially right-of-way acquisition may not be preferred, but if they're congested and their driveway access is blocked, that too would be a concern down the road. So we're, and I don't have the specifics in front of me, but because of the traffic study, the volume generation, the lane distribution that we see, those are the reasons we require this additional turn lane.
I get it.
So that was our reasoning behind it.
And I can get it. I mean, I can see the need there, though, but, so what do we do at this point, though? I don't know if that's for you or the applicant or staff to say it's, that's a requirement, or do we wait and see? Because, again, I would not like to see the applicant waiting to see or to find that they have to and it costs them X amount of dollars, you know?
Our recommendation would be to leave the requirement as is. If they have any infeasibility in terms of right-of-way acquisition, I recommend that they submit that in writing as a waiver request to the DRC Committee or to the Department through County Engineer. And then, of course, the power rests with the Board if they want to waive it today. That is certainly something you can do. Our recommendation would be to leave it as is, let them assess the impacts, and provide a written request for waiver to the Department.
Got it, okay. All right. I see my friend Joe is making it to the podium, so let's.
Because of the width of the Central Church Road right-of-way, there is enough for a taper, an angled roadway that comes out, which we have designed.
Okay.
And it meets all current requirements, but it does not include, this is Shelby Lane, it does not include the added right-of-way on this side. And I've got the traffic study here, and on page 24, it states that "A right-turn flare with a raised island should be added on the northbound Shelby Lane approach. The turn out of Shelby Lane with the added roadway is not warranted." So it was based on that that we did this design, but we'll work with Suliman later today and try to give you something that doesn't require an ongoing debate on live TV.
Okay, so you guys will take care of that offline, I guess, to kind of figure it out?
It's online.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Joe. Thank you, Suliman. And I think that's all I have for now. So I'll yield back. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. All right. If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
So we covered both the Platts, right? Okay. So we will move to number 16. Approval to accept as a public ground ambulance provider for Medicare/Medicaid services at 2025 final upper payment limit amount of $222,356 for patient transports and pay the intergovernmental transfer amount of $75,512 to the Georgia Department of Community Health to be funded by the fire department budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Chief Allen.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, County Administration. Every year, we do this with our providers, and this is, we're just asking for permission to receive these funds.
Okay. Any questions? Forward for our Fire Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was pretty easy, wasn't it, Fire Chief? You went, "Thank you."
Number 17. Approval of a proposal with BRG office movers in the amount of $24,811 to be funded by the Unink Fund to relocate the Development Services Office to the Timber Ridge location and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. James Worthington.
Morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, members of the Board.
Good morning.
As you all know, we're working on a project to complete a new administration building at Timber Ridge for the Development Services Department to move over to, to make room for some additional courtrooms in the courthouse. So part of that, an anticipated issue that we were, knew was coming, we're going to have to pay someone to move us over there. So we've got about 53 employees and workstations to be moved, and you could imagine a significant number of files. I believe we have 55 of the large five drawer file cabinets that have to go, so significant amount of paperwork to go. We are working to minimize that as much as possible, but there is a lot of state law and federal law as far as what we have to maintain and keep, so we're working on that. But we started this by looking at any options with our purchasing co-ops like Omnia to see if there was someone in the area that could do it under state contract, but we were unable to locate anyone. So we moved over to getting quotes. I've got quotes from three different vendors. All three vendors had kind of various pathways for completion, different options, whether it be boxes or crates or carts or, so we went through each of those. After we received everything, I had some discussions with procurement, and we've decided to go with the BRG office movers for a number of reasons. One, they specialize in office moves, where the others were kind of general movers, I guess you would say. They offer library cart style things for the tall file cabinet, so it'll make the man-hours on our end significantly less to load and unload all these files. We have to unload all the file cabinets before you move them. So the carts should be a lot quicker option for our staff. Another primary consideration, they offer a fixed price, so this is a fixed price, where most offer an estimate only, where in our previous, some of the previous moves I managed, the price can jump by 25 or 50%, you know? So this is a fixed price, so that was a big selling point for me. And then they had the most thorough estimator. He spent about two and a half hours out here going through everything, catalog and all of the data and all. So we're proposing to go with BRG. Open for questions if you have any.
Okay. Any questions forward? Managing Director, if you could just answer a question regarding your record storage.
Sure.
So you said all your records have to go, and I know they have to be maintained. Is it 10 years, seven years, or forever?
It varies depending on the department and what type of plans. We have some that are forever, some that are three years, some that are five years. So it's very, it's a varying point that we've got to meet. We have gone through under some ARPA fund, and we scanned it a lot, scanned about 45,000 pages of construction plans, the large documents, large formats. So that's one huge part we're not going to have to move. We've got all of those digitized.
Thank you.
We received all of that back probably about a month ago, so we're still working through catalog and getting all that sorted out, but that's, that was a significant milestone for us. We have been working to kind of thin out duplicate files where multiple departments would have the same files. We're working to kind of get them all in one spot, so we're not moving 10 of the same form over, you know? So, but we have been in this office for 27 years now, so we have accumulated some, quite a bit of files.
Yes.
So I'm expecting the courthouse to kind of raise up a little bit when we move out, when they can take all that weight out, so.
Right. Well, you answered my question.
All right.
I was leaning towards digitized records, and you said you've already, I guess, digitized about 45,000 documents, and you're continuing to do that as well?
We are, and then some of the other departments are as well, they're in. So I know the Environmental Health has a fairly significant amount of files as well. They keep theirs perpetually. They have a contract to digitize, they're working on that now.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if it'll be, it will likely not be complete when we move, but we'll be making some space, but they're working on it, too, so.
Okay, thank you for the response. Any other questions forward or response? All right, Madam Clerk, the next one.
Okay, number 18. Approval to allocate additional funds and approve change orders necessary to complete the renovation at the Timber Ridge Building in an amount not to exceed $90,000 to be funded by the Unink Fund pending final legal review. James Worthington.
Morning again. As mentioned, we're finalizing the building that we'll be moving into. As you recall, we did nearly all of the funding for this out of ARPA funds, at least 80% or so out of ARPA funds. We've done everything, we had packed in as much as we could into the ARPA funding, but when you're doing a renovation, you kind of never know what you're getting until you start tearing out the walls. So those are generally called unforeseen circumstances. You just, you know, once you start tearing into things, you find things that aren't what you expected. So overall, building's great, no real concerns. We've had a number of issues that have come up at the end. We're expecting to have this project wrapped up in about the next 30 days. So, but we've got a number of issues, particularly regarding some of the safety things that we want to address, that I did not have enough funding for. So some of those, and I've kind of got them all lumped into this one request, but those are things like access control. There were some card readers on the building that have proven to either be dysfunctional or not compatible with the system we're going with. So we've got to replace a lot of the card readers, so, and that will separate, we have those on the exterior of the building where you, you know, no one can get in, similar to this building, and then also interior spaces where you separate public space or citizen space from the employee-only space. So those doors will be card readers, too. So there's a chunk, there's about 30,000 to cover all of those. The building has had insufficient grounding. It looks like it was grounded properly in the beginning, and somewhere through its life it has lost ground. So we've got an electrical contractor that's proposing to do a new grounding triad, which is a, they'll basically run a large ground wire from the main electrical room outside, put new ground rods in, and connect those up into a loop, re-ground the water lines and everything, so get all of that covered. We're looking at doing some improvements on the intersection where it meets Timber Ridge. Is that my time limit? No. So, so doing some intersection improvements. There's kind of a low spot in the road there, and we're looking, we've been working with Director Rana about doing a flashing vehicle approaching, kind of like we have at the senior center in Lythia Springs. So if anybody's down in the hole, it kind of makes that a little safer. And then the only thing that I don't have a set price on that would be our remaining exposure is there's some issues, they're working on the fire monitoring system. So I've included about 10,000 extra in my figures to get to this total of 90,000. So I should be able to cover anything. Should be a one-time request on this. I'm not asked for any additional funds at all, so it'll be a one-time request, should get us finished. I've got the moving covered, all of the furniture, all of the interior, so we should be set at that point, so. Open for questions.
All right. Any questions forward? All right.
Thank you all very much.
Managing Director. All right.
Okay. We removed number 19. So we'll move to our new agenda items that we added?
Yes.
The first one is authorization for the chairman to sign a certification, certification of consistency form for the Douglas County Community Services Board to submit a housing grant application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Okay, thank you so much. We have Pat Henry here.
Pat Henry.
Our chief financial officer of Douglas County Community Service Board. You have the floor.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners and Admin Staff. Thank you so much for allowing me to present to you this morning on such short notice. Six months to today in December, I presented to you a $10 million HUD grant, housing grant that we were proposing. Today, I want to just come before you and give you an update on that grant and what's transpired over the past six months. Short presentation. So I'm going to briefly bring us up to speed as far as what that grant entailed when I first presented, and then I will go into a brief summary of the changes. The project purpose was a Douglas-supported housing project provided to add new units of permanent housing to displaced citizens in Douglas County. This was going to be done by acquisition, new acquisitions, new construction and rehabilitation of dilapidated housing throughout the county. This was going to be done through the 2024 COC Bill's Grant under the Continuum of Care Program. We were proposing six multifamily housing units, which comprised of four townhouses, which would house 24 families or 24 units. In addition, there would be seven single-family homes, which came to a total of 31 units or families. Now, the HUD Continuum of Care Bill's Program, it was $10 million to house the chronically homeless, women fleeing domestic violence, women with minor children who were homeless, individuals transitioning from jails or similar institutions, and individuals with disabilities or families with at least one member with a disability. But this grant was superseded in 2025 by the COC 25 Grant, which align with the President's executive orders and the goals of the new administration. So those changes consisted of a reduction in the funding of 1 million, so now the limit is 9 million instead of $10 million. The number of wards nationally dropped from 25 to eight. We're trying to get one of those eight. Another thing that they changed with that reducing, they have a program called Coordinated Entry over the U.S., and you get extra points for participating. I'm proud to say that the CSB is the lead agency for that Coordinated Entry Program in Georgia, in our region. So that will help us with our application. The eligible citizens, I went through the five different groups that affected, but now they've dropped that down to one. And it's all related to DEI. So right now, we can only include families and individuals with a disability. That will include all populations of disabled individuals, instead of identifying, say, women with domestic violence or women with children. So that was the one thing that they changed, which is a big deal, in my opinion. And the funds cannot be used for transitional housing. So we were going to designate some homes just for those individuals coming out of institutions, but we can't do that now. It has to be for individuals with disabilities. So what does that mean for us? First, we have to submit a new application, which is due June 13. In addition, we have to update that certification of consistency so that the date lines up with this new 2025 COC grant. Now, this is just to show you what the Commissioners signed off on last year. It's just very basic, it's just you approve and are letting us apply for this grant and support it, and it's in line with what you see happening in that And that's it in a nutshell. Questions?
Do you have a copy of your new application without the signature? You know, that was for the old?
Yes, that's just to show you what we will be signing within the next couple of days. I do have new hard copies for you.
And Attorney Lewis has that information as well, so y'all will know. She's received the copies.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions forward for our chief financial officer of Douglas County Community Service Board? Commissioner Mitchell, you are moving your mic.
Just a couple, so 25 to eight grants now that we can apply for, so we only have eight of the 25, if I'm hearing you correctly.
We just have eight that they're going to award.
Award, I'm sorry.
Yes.
That's what I meant. Eight that's going to be awarded. And are the awardees going to be, is going to be the $9 million, or each one at nine, or?
Each will be different. We're asking for 9 million. That's the max, which we see as far as. That's the max, which we see as far as completing the thirty-one homes, it'll be about eight point five million to build and get, even trying to get furnishings in there. And the remaining would be case management fees for the developer, and the case manager would be, we will identify the families as the houses are being built, and in that process, they'll be trained in finance, financial literacy, education on how to run a household, and give, if they have substance abuse or anything like that, we would then provide those services as well.
But, the other additional question to that, though, so of the eight, each one is nine million dollars, or of the eight, it's divided up into a million dollars each, or?
No, it, there are different levels.
Okay.
Based on the agency's criteria and their points.
Okay. But, we're applying for the entire nine.
Yes, the nine million, based on our level and criteria, we can get up to nine million.
And last, but are there anything that's going to be dealing with veterans? I know you had to drop off the, those that are from coming out of incarceration, and got it, not that I'm totally in agreement, but I guess you, you have no control of that, that's?
Yes, it's in, any individual, if the veteran has a disability, they qualify.
Got it. So, we don't isolate that to say veterans, we just basically have encompassed that to include veterans.
The entire population.
Okay, because we can't even say now, women, and so on.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, okay, good enough. Thank you. I yield back.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Any other questions? Commissioner Raxton, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
So, I understand that now the criterias of what's eligible has been dropped to just one line, to have families or individuals with disability.
Correct.
That will be eligible for these thirty-one units.
Yes.
Okay. Have we identified where the potential sites for the thirty-one units would be located in Douglas County?
Our partner is with Ideal Corp. They are in the process of looking at available land or purchasing, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Okay. No, the question was just in regards to the location, and you were saying that there's
Yes, Ideal Corp, they are in the process of looking at land purchases.
Okay.
And buildings.
Okay. So, just out of curiosity, if we're approved for the funds, typically, what is the turnaround for design and construction and move-in for these units?
HUD is giving us twenty-four to thirty-six months to complete the project, and Ideal projected that they could have it done within twenty-four months.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, Madam Chair, I yield the floor back to you.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Alvarez, thank you so much.
So, that's a total of all those townhomes and houses within twenty-four months?
Yes. He said he can do it, we'll see.
Twenty-four to thirty-six, I thought you said.
Thirty-six months.
Okay.
Thirty-six, still, that's a...
That's tight.
It's a lot. Okay. I'm disappointed to hear that, I mean, they've also taken away those who are trying to escape domestic violence. I really cannot believe that can, can't be a part of the application. Anyway, I just want to make sure that that was a total, has to be all completed within thirty-six months. Okay.
Yes, they do have a hundred million that's coming down the pipe, which I'm going to keep my eye on, and I suspect that one hundred million will probably designated to those groups that they decided not to put on this grant.
And would, if this does come to fruition and we're awarded this nine million, I would like it, if possible, for some of our local developers to maybe assist in building these homes, just, you know, because it's coming to our community, I'd like to help out those who are building our community.
That's a good possibility. I mentioned that to Larry Tony, he's over that.
Okay. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Okay. A great idea.
Any other questions?
I do, I just have one.
Okay, Commissioner Mitchell, you have the floor.
So, what happens in that twenty-four, thirty-six months that we don't meet that, that deadline? The money goes back, or you work on an extension? I mean, kind of?
We probably work on extensions, but there is an option, if you want to go out to five years, but we were trying to get it with that twenty-four to thirty-six, two to three years. So, on the safe side, being conservative, I might just put in five years on the question.
I mean, real estate, I mean, with the whole infrastructure that you got to put in, and then build, or you got to find a line, then you got to, I mean, so when does the clock start ticking? If you get the grant, the clock starts ticking then?
It starts October one. That's when the clock starts ticking. They notify us July thirty-first of this year.
So, I'm, I'm hoping that we're definitely got our eye on X amount of land.
Yes.
And it, does it have to be all together, or could it be?
No, it's scattered placement.
Okay, okay, because to, to meet that kind of a deadline in real estate, that's a, I mean, that's a...
Aggressive.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a lot to try to pull off. But, at the end of the day, I mean, at, at least you, you're thinking about Plan B, and that is an extension of some sort, or five years to say, hey, we got plenty of time, but I...
Right.
That...
Or we could have more, say, on rehabilitation versus new construction.
Got it. Right. And rehabbing, doing some stuff, that would be an ideal way of going at it, or approaching it that way, though.
Right.
But, that option exists with you guys, even if you get...
Yes, we can do new construction acquisitions from other developers or rehabs.
Got it. Okay, okay, good, okay. All right, I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Any other questions or concerns, board? No, no, ma'am, you, you cannot speak. Excuse me, ma'am, you cannot speak. Will, can I speak to, I'll speak to? Yes. What I'll do after the meeting, Clerk, could you get her information after the meeting? Will you be here to the end of the meeting? We're almost done, and then I can give you the information.
I will.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. All right. Any questions again for the board? And when I'm speaking questions, I just want to make it clear, it's for the Board of Commissioners, okay? Okay, you're welcome. All right, it sounds like you're clear.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners, Madam Chair.
But, I will take your question offline. We'll take care of you, okay? You're welcome. All right. Madam Clerk?
Our second item we added was the addition of the appointment of Fay Marie Landers to the Animal Control Advisory Board to represent the chairman's appointment, and as you stated, this is to fill a vacancy on that board.
Any questions for, regarding the vacancy? Okay. All right. If there, is there anything else that the board need to bring before? Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Vice Chairman, you have the floor.
First, I'd like to say to our nine-one of Fire and EMS, they had a very busy weekend, and they did a fantastic job this weekend. Two, I was, received a couple of phone calls from a couple of members of the Personnel Review Board in regards to concerns about that we were entertaining about changing the meetings to quarterly, so I just asked one of them if they would just come, express their concerns, as we take that into consideration, so that we can get an understanding. I didn't want it just, that to be brought to just me, but I asked Mr. Macon if he would just come and just express their concerns for our consideration in regards to changing those meetings.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Macon?
Good morning, Madam Chair, board.
Good morning.
It's a pleasure and honor. The Personnel Review Board takes our actions very seriously, and it's a very bipartisan board. We act in a very bipartisan, black-and-white manner. The Merit Handbook is our bible. If it's in the handbook, that's the code that we go by, and there have been things coming from management in the private sector that I have been surprised, that would not, you know, result in immediate termination, but if we move to a quarterly system with the revisions to the handbook, then you foment a certain degree of chaos among the staff, because now you're requesting to file a grievance under the August handbook, or the October handbook, or the June handbook. So, having something that is consistent is very important for the county staff. I think that a concession would be a twice-a-year revision. There is a lot of room for improvement, and a lot of inconsistency, and a lot of contradictions in the handbook that have come up over the years. I would love to redline the thing myself, but the request from the county came to do it quarterly. I don't think that that is a service to the county staff to do it quarterly. I think that we would be better served doing it at least twice a year, so that there is a consistency among the grievances the staff files. And that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you so much, Mr. Macon.
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Any other questions, board? Certainly, I would like to yield the floor to our citizen who stood earlier. Come to the mic and just say, express your concerns, I believe, certainly in equality. We usually don't have anyone come up to speak, but just if you could, address, address me and the board with your concern.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman, for the opportunity, and I'll make it very brief.
What is your name?
My name is Shanika Newman.
Shanika?
Shanika Newman.
Newman.
I am becoming more engaged in the community, just because I have concerns as a first-time homeowner, and I elect, I'm, I'm born and raised in Atlanta, but in DeKalb County, and I purchased a home here in Douglas County, and I am becoming more engaged in our local government, just because it's my right as a homeowner. And I just, I appreciate the board and what it stands for, and how it serves the community, but I would be remiss if I said that I didn't have some concerns as well. Specifically, I came here today because I had a concern that I've began to address, and I'll meet with you later as I requested a one-on-one via the, the available portal in regards to my specific Commissioner, Whitney Kenner Jones. She's obviously unavailable today, and, but that's not why, you know, I'm here to address this. My concern why I spoke up was because I don't understand the need to encourage a homeless community here in Douglas County. I understand that we have a tent community that is widely accept, acceptable. I don't appreciate that. As the CFO mentioned, these are individuals who are coming from incarceration, or various other, you know, circumstances. While I empathize with that, I don't want that by me.
Right, yeah, we hear you.
And so, when I've paid four hundred-plus thousand dollars for a home, that's a concern for me as a citizen here, and I, I, I understand the need for people to have housing, but honestly, considerably, Madam Commissioner, I just want to express that not everybody wants that next to their home that they've purchased. People here have spent a lot of money. I could have elected to purchase a home in DeKalb County.
Okay.
And, and I'll digress, but I just, I thank you for the opportunity to share, but, and that's what I wanted to express after the CFO made her presentation, which I appreciate and empathize with, but I just want to say that there are constituents here that don't necessarily want that by them.
Yes, we understand, but certainly we can take this conversation offline.
Yes, ma'am. I've already arranged for a one-on-one.
Oh, you have?
And so, I hope that we can find a time that's accommodatable for us both.
Okay.
To sit down. Thank you so much.
You are more than welcome. All right. Board of Commissioners, if we have nothing else to go before us, I will certainly touch bases with our county attorney. Madam County Attorney, do we need to go into executive session?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair, and we have a call at eleven-thirty, so I would just ask if we can honor that time for a call we have during executive session, please, for legal real estate personnel and cybersecurity.
Okay. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to go into executive session for legal personnel, real estate, and cy, cybersecurity? Do we have a motion?
So, move. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion, board? We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. We have a four-o unanimous vote, and the motion carries to go into executive session. Citizens of Douglas County, we are taking a slight pause for the cause to engage, when I say we, the Board of Commissioners, in executive session, and we will return momentarily. Thank you.